Hi, Dan.
Good morning.
So I think we'll begin with last Secretary Masello to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Todd Hobler?
Here.
Len Lennahan?
Here.
I am present. Carrie Phillips?
Here.
Jeff Stone?
Here.
Susan Swartz?
Here.
Dan East Wilson? Dan East, she may be muted. Well, we can see that she's here, but we can't hear her. Dan East? How about Albert?
Here.
Great. So when Dan East gets unmuted, we can have her announce her presence. Otherwise, we do have a quorum.
Thanks, Kate. Appreciate it. I was wondering if we could have Albert, too, who is tenure is running low here. I don't know if he's going to be around for the next month or two, but Albert, I wonder if we could have you do the mission statement as the student trustee.
I'm having some computer issues. I can't pull it up. Would you mind tapping someone else for it?
Okay, that's fine. I'll just then I'll just read it. SUNY Erie Community College meets the needs of a diverse student body and contributes to regional economic vitality by providing high-quality, flexible, affordable, and accessible educational programs committed to student success. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll move to the consent agenda. We have seven items to move. Before we do that, anybody have any questions on any of the particulars of these items?
Well, I would just add that I would like to congratulate and thank Kelly on having captured so well the rather elaborate discussion at the last meeting regarding our budget situation and the Workday financing arrangement. It was very difficult stuff, and Kelly did a great job of capturing it.
I agree.
Great.
We'd be without her.
Anybody else? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve items one through seven. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Kate, Masello makes a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Susan.
Susan Swartz seconded it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, items are approved, one through seven.
We need to take a roll call vote on these issues only because I couldn't hear everybody say yes.
Okay, so we could do one roll call or we could do on each one?
Just on the consent agenda as a whole, I think.
Okay, sure. Kate, go ahead.
So Todd Hobler?
I approve.
Len Lennahan?
Approve.
I approve. Carrie Phillips?
Approve.
Jeff Stone?
Approve.
Susan Swartz?
Here.
Dan East Wilson? Dan East, she may be muted.
Everybody's muted.
Well, we can see that she's here, but we can't hear her. Dan East? How about Albert?
Here.
Great. So when Dan East gets unmuted, we can have her announce her presence. Otherwise, we do have a quorum.
Thanks, Kate. Appreciate it. I was wondering if we could have Albert, too, who is tenure is running low here. I don't know if he's going to be around for the next month or two, but Albert, I wonder if we could have you do the mission statement as the student trustee.
I'm having some computer issues. I can't pull it up. Would you mind tapping someone else for it?
Okay, that's fine. I'll just then I'll just read it. SUNY Erie Community College meets the needs of a diverse student body and contributes to regional economic vitality by providing high-quality, flexible, affordable, and accessible educational programs committed to student success. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll move to the consent agenda. We have seven items to move. Before we do that, anybody have any questions on any of the particulars of the of these items?
Well, I would just add that I would like to congratulate and thank Kelly on having captured so well the rather elaborate discussion at the last meeting regarding our budget situation and the Workday financing arrangement. It was very difficult stuff, and Kelly did a great job of capturing it.
I agree.
Great.
We'd be without her.
Anybody else? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve items one through seven. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Kate, Masello makes a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Susan.
Susan Swartz seconded it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, items are approved, one through seven.
We need to take a roll call vote on these issues only because I couldn't hear everybody say yes.
Okay, so we could do one roll call or we could do on each one?
Just on the consent agenda as a whole, I think.
Okay, sure. Kate, go ahead.
So Todd Hobler?
I approve.
Len Lennahan?
Approve.
I approve. Carrie Phillips?
Approve.
Jeff Stone?
Approve.
Susan Swartz?
Here.
Dan East Wilson? Dan East, she may be muted.
Everybody's muted.
Well, we can see that she's here, but we can't hear her. Dan East? How about Albert?
Here.
Great. So when Dan East gets unmuted, we can have her announce her presence. Otherwise, we do have a quorum.
Thanks, Kate. Appreciate it. I was wondering if we could have Albert, too, who is tenure is running low here. I don't know if he's going to be around for the next month or two, but Albert, I wonder if we could have you do the mission statement as the student trustee.
I'm having some computer issues. I can't pull it up. Would you mind tapping someone else for it?
Okay, that's fine. I'll just then I'll just read it. SUNY Erie Community College meets the needs of a diverse student body and contributes to regional economic vitality by providing high-quality, flexible, affordable, and accessible educational programs committed to student success. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll move to the consent agenda. We have seven items to move. Before we do that, anybody have any questions on any of the particulars of the of these items?
Well, I would just add that I would like to congratulate and thank Kelly on having captured so well the rather elaborate discussion at the last meeting regarding our budget situation and the Workday financing arrangement. It was very difficult stuff, and Kelly did a great job of capturing it.
I agree.
Great.
We'd be without her.
Anybody else? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve items one through seven. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Kate, Masello makes a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Susan.
Susan Swartz seconded it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, items are approved, one through seven.
We need to take a roll call vote on these issues only because I couldn't hear everybody say yes.
Okay, so we could do one roll call or we could do on each one?
Just on the consent agenda as a whole, I think.
Okay, sure. Kate, go ahead.
So Todd Hobler?
I approve.
Len Lennahan?
Approve.
I approve. Carrie Phillips?
Approve.
Jeff Stone?
Approve.
Susan Swartz?
Here.
Dan East Wilson? Dan East, she may be muted.
Everybody's muted.
Well, we can see that she's here, but we can't hear her. Dan East? How about Albert?
Here.
Great. So when Dan East gets unmuted, we can have her announce her presence. Otherwise, we do have a quorum.
Thanks, Kate. Appreciate it. I was wondering if we could have Albert, too, who is tenure is running low here. I don't know if he's going to be around for the next month or two, but Albert, I wonder if we could have you do the mission statement as the student trustee.
I'm having some computer issues. I can't pull it up. Would you mind tapping someone else for it?
Okay, that's fine. I'll just then I'll just read it. SUNY Erie Community College meets the needs of a diverse student body and contributes to regional economic vitality by providing high-quality, flexible, affordable, and accessible educational programs committed to student success. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll move to the consent agenda. We have seven items to move. Before we do that, anybody have any questions on any of the particulars of the of these items?
Well, I would just add that I would like to congratulate and thank Kelly on having captured so well the rather elaborate discussion at the last meeting regarding our budget situation and the Workday financing arrangement. It was very difficult stuff, and Kelly did a great job of capturing it.
I agree.
Great.
We'd be without her.
Anybody else? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve items one through seven. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Kate, Masello makes a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Susan.
Susan Swartz seconded it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, items are approved, one through seven.
We need to take a roll call vote on these issues only because I couldn't hear everybody say yes.
Okay, so we could do one roll call or we could do on each one?
Just on the consent agenda as a whole, I think.
Okay, sure. Kate, go ahead.
So Todd Hobler?
I approve.
Len Lennahan?
Approve.
I approve. Carrie Phillips?
Approve.
Jeff Stone?
Approve.
Susan Swartz?
Here.
Dan East Wilson? Dan East? It looks like she's trying to talk, but I don't see it coming through. Albert, two?
I approve.
The motion carries with.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. We'll wait to see what happens with Dan East if she checks in. I did send her a text to ask her to unmute.
Sure. Thank you, Kate. Okay, we're now going to move into our favorite topic today, the 2021 Erie Community College budget. Budget and Audit Committee Chair Jeff Stone. Jeff, do you want to walk us through this?
Yeah. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to just start by saying that we, as the Board of Trustees, are very mindful of how difficult and challenging and stress-inducing any discussion of this budget is for all the people on this phone call and the broad Erie Community College community. We are keeping that thought front and center in our minds as we deliberate exactly what to do about this budget. And some of our thinking you will see expressed throughout the documents that are accessible to you. So I don't plan on summarizing all the factors that have led to the creation of a very difficult budget year and the delivery of that to the legislature by July 7. But rather, I would like to refer you for the details to the to the budget book, to the budget summary, which, at least in my hard copy, is rough around page 114 of our materials. And also, I think importantly, to the one-page summary, almost the summary of the summary, that really drills down and gives the main factors that have been on the minds of all the trustees as we've grappled with these financial issues and attempted to do our duty as trustees and as fiduciaries for the whole college community amidst these, you know, very difficult times. Moving down from the college community, I'd like to particularly thank the administration of the college folks, I would say led by Penny Howard in particular, who have worked very, very hard to brief the trustees on the circumstances of what we are facing and to listen to our concerns and take those concerns back and do her best to create a budget in frankly a state of affairs that does not lend itself to the creation of a meaningful budget. So I would say, speaking for all the trustees, and we've been acting pretty much as a committee of the whole in being briefed on this, Chairman Lennahan has done a great job of trying to keep us on on track, focused, responding to incoming from all different directions. And we are a committee of the whole. All of us have, I would like to thank my fellow trustees for engaging very thoughtfully in this, many briefings, meetings, where we've, again, grappled with what to do here, trying to cause the least disruption to the students, to our mission, to the college community, while being mindful of the fact that we cannot create dollars out of thin air, and we have significant challenges in the form of what has happened at the state level and even the federal level from the COVID-19 pandemic. Yes, we had enrollment problems going into this budget year even, and we've been managing those throughout the year, and then COVID hit, and really, really important things for us, like the 98% floor on state aid that we really had counted on, got jerked away suddenly. Enrollment is a big question mark, you know, beyond the normal enrollment attrition that we've been seeing for a number of years. We now have, you know, great uncertainty about the manner in which we can present classes in the fall. That makes it difficult to market the classes. And while we may benefit in the long run from a an environment where people are unemployed and may be looking to go back to community college to pick up credentials to further their education, it doesn't happen on a dime, and it doesn't happen with the switch of a light switch. So we're hopeful for enrollment improvement in the long run, but we have difficulties right now. So those are just a few comments on the top of my mind about where we are in the process that has led to us here. The other big thought is one that you've heard me talk about before, and that is, where do we stand in terms of getting some help from the federal government, not just for SUNY Erie and Erie County, City of Buffalo, State of New York, but nationwide? In terms of the federal government recognizing that, you know, one or two shots of stimulus and some unemployment, you know, may not do the job here. New York City or New York, New York has been the epicenter of the COVID-19 problem in the country. We're doing much better now as it spreads elsewhere. Hopefully, that'll forge a better national.
Hi, Dan.
Good morning.
So I think we'll begin with last Secretary Masello to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Todd Hobler?
Here.
Len Lenahan?
Here.
I am present. Carrie Phillips?
Here.
Jeff Stone?
Here.
Susan Swartz?
Here.
Danise Wilson? Danise, she may be muted.
Everybody's muted.
Well, we can see that she's here, but we can't hear her. Danise? How about Albert?
Here.
Great. So when Danise gets unmuted, we can have her announce her presence. Otherwise, we do have a quorum.
Thanks, Kate. Appreciate it. I was wondering if we could have Albert, too, who is, his tenure is running low here. I don't know if he's going to be around for the next month or two, but Albert, I wonder if we could have you do the mission statement as the student trustee.
I'm having some computer issues. I can't pull it up. Would you mind tapping someone else for it?
Okay, that's fine. I'll just, then I'll just read it. SUNY Erie Community College meets the needs of a diverse student body and contributes to regional economic vitality by providing high-quality, flexible, affordable, and accessible educational programs committed to student success. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll move to the consent agenda. We have seven items to move. Before we do that, anybody have any questions on any of the particulars of the, of these items?
Well, I would just add that I would like to congratulate and thank Kelly on having captured so well the rather elaborate discussion at the last meeting regarding our budget situation and the Workday financing arrangement. It was very difficult stuff, and Kelly did a great job of capturing it.
I agree.
Great.
We'd be without her.
Anybody else? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve items one through seven. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Kate, Masello makes a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Susan.
Go ahead.
Susan Swartz seconded it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, items are approved, one through seven.
We need to take a roll call vote on these issues, only because I couldn't hear everybody say yes.
Okay, so we could do one roll call or we could do on each one?
Just on the consent agenda as a whole, I think.
Okay, sure. Kate, go ahead.
So Todd Hobler?
I approve.
Len Lenahan?
Approve.
I approve. Carrie Phillips?
Approve.
Jeff Stone?
Approve.
Susan Swartz? Danise Wilson? Danise? It looks like she's trying to talk, but I don't see it coming through. Albert, too?
I approve.
The motion carries with.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. We'll wait to see what happens with Danise if she checks in. I did send her a text to ask her to unmute.
Sure. Thank you, Kate. Okay, we're now going to move into our favorite topic today, 2021 Erie Community College budget. Budget and Audit Committee Chair Jeff Stone. Jeff, do you want to walk us through this?
Yeah. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again.
I'd like to just start by saying that we, as the Board of Trustees, are very mindful of how difficult and challenging and stress-inducing any discussion of this budget is for all the people on this phone call and the broad Erie Community College community. We are keeping that thought front and center in our minds as we deliberate exactly what to do about this budget. And some of our thinking you will see expressed throughout the documents that are accessible to you. So I don't plan on summarizing all the factors that have led to the creation of a very difficult budget year and the delivery of that to the legislature by July 7th. But rather, I would like to refer you for the details to the, to the budget book, to the budget summary, which, at least in my hard copy, is rough around page 114 of our materials. And also, I think importantly, to the one-page summary, that, almost the summary of the summary, that really drills down and gives the main actors that have been on the minds of all the trustees as we've grappled with these financial issues and attempted to do our duty as trustees and as fiduciaries for the whole college community amidst these, you know, very difficult times. Moving down from the college community, I'd like to particularly thank the administration of the college, folks, I would say, led by Penny Howard in particular, who have worked very, very hard to brief the trustees on the circumstances of what we are facing and to listen to our concerns and take those concerns back and do her best to create a budget in frankly, a state of affairs that does not lend itself to the creation of a meaningful budget. So I would say, speaking for all the trustees, and we've been acting pretty much as a committee of the whole in being briefed on this. Chairman Lenahan has done a great job of trying to keep us on, on track, focused, responding to incoming from all different directions. And we are a committee of the whole. All of us have, I would like to thank my fellow trustees for engaging very thoughtfully in this, many briefings, meetings, where we've, again, grappled with what to do here, trying to cause the least disruption to the students, to our mission, to the college community, while being mindful of the fact that we cannot create dollars out of thin air and we have significant challenges in the form of what has happened at the state level and even the federal level from the COVID-19 pandemic. Yes, we had enrollment problems going into this budget year even, and we've been managing those throughout the year. And then COVID hit, and really, really important things for us, like the 98% floor on state aid that we really had counted on, got jerked away suddenly. Enrollment is a big question mark, you know, beyond the normal enrollment attrition that we've been seeing for a number of years. We now have, you know, great uncertainty about the manner in which we can present classes in the fall. That makes it difficult to market the classes. And while we may benefit in the long run from a, an environment where people are unemployed and maybe looking to go back to community college to pick up credentials to further their education, it doesn't happen on a dime, and it doesn't happen with the switch of a, a light switch. So we're hopeful for enrollment improvement in the long run, but we, we have difficulties right now. So those are just a few comments on the top of my mind about where we are in the process that has led to us here. The other big thought is one that you've heard me talk about before. And that is, where do we stand in terms of getting some help from the federal government, not just for SUNY Erie and Erie County, City of Buffalo, State of New York, but nationwide? In terms of the federal government recognizing that, you know, one or two shots of stimulus and some unemployment, you know, may not do the job here. New York City or New York, New York has been the epicenter of the COVID-19 problem in the country. We're doing much better now as it spreads elsewhere. Hopefully, that'll forge a better national consensus that we really need to continue to have help from the federal government to maintain any recognizable system of services within our states and local, including our community colleges and other colleges. So one of our strategies, you've heard us talk about this for the last two board meetings, has been, let's try to delay as long as we can the delivery of a budget to the college community and to the Erie County Executive and the Erie County Legislature until we have some guidance on what this might look like. And frankly, you know, to the way we think about it, let's have something realistic. I don't, the, the Board of Trustees does not frankly embrace this budget. We've had even discussions about whether we should have topped a budget. We have concluded after only a small amount of thought that, yes, we are legally obliged to budget in order to keep things coming. But we're very distressed about the situation we find ourselves in. We have to be, we think, the responsible ones. We are the ones who have to produce a budget. We have to look at dollars without making assumptions about what other, what other levels of government will do. We are hopeful and almost mindful that some degree of aid should be coming, but we can't assume that now. And even if we could assume that that aid is coming, we don't know how much it would be or what strictures would be placed on it as we receive that aid. So from the perspective of the Board of Trustees, everyone on this call should be mindful of how important, I know you all are, that we get some assistance from our county sponsor, from the State of New York, and ultimately, really, from the federal government, because the state and county are very dependent on them, on the federal government as well. So this starts really and ends with Congress and the President in terms of how, what this will look like in reality. Here, on June 25th, our obligation is to produce a budget based on the facts as we find them now. We have done that, and we have shared our thinking about how we have done that and why we made certain decisions in the budget message. That message is intended for the county legislature and the county executive. But of course, it is of great interest to everyone on this call. And we have absolutely no problem with sharing it, obviously, with everyone on this call and the public. It presents fairly the state of our thinking and the circumstances in which we find ourselves. I, I think I will pause at this point and just ask fellow trustees, before we move over to remarks that Penny may have in terms of exactly where we are in the timeline, what happens next, and addressing how we've managed this gap. I will ask fellow trustees, I guess, starting with Chairman Lenahan, to add to, supplement, or correct any of the comments I've just made.
Well, Jeff, first, thanks for your very thoughtful presentation, combining, you know, facts and reality. This is not a budget that we all want to jump out in the street and convey our, we're thrilled about it because we're certainly not, but it, it is what it is. I hate to use a trite term, but who would ever thought at the beginning of this year, we would be, you know, where we are today? I mean, this is a unprecedented situation. And so I too want to thank everybody, you know, Penny certainly leading the charge on the budget, and everybody who helped, you know, construct a narrative that is the best we can do. And in many respects, our hands are tied. We're waiting, we're opening our arms, looking for help. And hopefully, during the summer months and before the school year begins, that help will arrive or we'll be able to make technical changes that will ease the burden on certainly our students, first and foremost, but our staff, our faculty, and the people who make this college run every day. The same people who've kept this college going over the past three and a half months that have been nothing short than just unprecedented and difficult. The good news is, you know, the community, when I mean that, I mean, the county legislature is waiting for us to act, and they're ready to assist us in any way they can. We, we obviously have a process that we are legally bound to meet, and that's why we're voting today and getting this over to the county executive so we can put it on the agenda by 10 o'clock on July 7th. So at the meeting on the 9th, it can be assigned to committee, which is community enrichment. And at that meeting, you know, representatives from this college will be at the legislature discussing this budget. And the ledge will be taking action on the 23rd. It'd be nice if we got, you know, who knows, we may get some more information from the state. That's entirely possible. But it's, it's unlikely we're going to hear anything from the federal government until the month of August. As you can see, they're, they are working on the policing issues, which has really pushed the Phase Four of the stimulus money to the side. And hopefully, although the President did mention something positive, that help is coming. You know, until we see it, it's hard to believe it. So hopefully, but let's be optimistic like we have been along on. So that's really all I have to say, other than to thank everybody. The trustees grappled with a very tough budget administration, Dan, Penny, and everybody who's done the best they can in a almost impossible situation to get us to where we are today. But the bottom line is, we will, you know, we will proceed, and we will, in the end, thrive. We will, you know, this is a, these are dark days, but there's light ahead of us, and we will get there. We just have to believe that's going to happen. So that's all I really have to say. I'd open up the floor to my colleagues.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order. First, I believe that Trustee Wilson is with us. Danise, is that true?
I am here. I apologize. Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Hello.
And you were on the phone when we had the, or you were on, on the web when we had the, well, the vote on the consent agenda. How can we record your vote on that?
I vote in consent, of the consent agenda.
Affirmative. Thank you. Another point of order, Mr. Chairman. I believe we were going to have a discussion about athletics prior to taking up the vote on the budget?
Yes.
So I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page.
Yeah, before we do vote on these resolutions, we will, the last, Penny, you can leave that discussion, but we've got to pick up where we left off yesterday. Okay, anybody else on the budget?
I'll go, Chairman. I'll just say, just to echo your sentiment and Jeff's as well, you know, thank you to Penny and everyone else who had, you know, worked so hard to pull something together. And although this is indeed unprecedented times, I just want to let the community out here know that, in the, in, in our college community, that we do not take any action lightly here. This is, this is definitely not what we have hoped to see. And we have also, I have always, during this process, considered our students first. And just thank you for your, for your effort and your, and your time.
I'd like to echo the praise for the hard work that Penny and Paula and the whole team have done. Thank you for helping to manage this very difficult process. I am dismayed, like all of you, that we are forced by New York State Directive to spend our hard-won reserves down to zero before we're eligible for any additional state aid. That is a difficult pill to swallow, since we've worked so hard to build those reserves and have a policy in place to keep three months of operating costs in reserve for, you know, emergency situations. The cost of this pandemic is still not clear. We know that, you know, regulations are going to require us to spend a lot more to make sure people, faculty, staff, students stay safe. And that's a priority of ours, and that costs money. We are dismayed that 51% of the revenue from, for SUNY Erie is going to be borne by students as we look to increase this tuition by 3%. I want to point out that it is less than $75 a semester, and while that is still a hit to the bottom line for our students and their pocketbooks, we hope that it is manageable. We do believe that most of our students are covered by state, or Pell and TAP, and that they won't feel in their pockets, and those that do have the opportunity to look to the ECC Foundation for additional support to make, make it, make them whole for their tuition payments. So again, we are all kind of holding our noses as we vote for this budget. And it is our best estimate of what the situation is now and the revenues that we can count on. So as those unknown, unknowable factors now become more clear, we will share that with the legislature on a monthly basis and with the college community so that we are as transparent as possible. And thank everybody for their understanding that this is just a different year in terms of how we deal with this crisis. I'll stop there.
Well said.
Anybody else? Susan, did you want to answer?
No, I'm, I'm good. Thank you. Just especially thanks again to Penny and her team and Jeff for keeping it, keeping us all together and, and on, on pace for this. It was amazing. Thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Jeff, you're muted. Jeff, you're muted if you're trying to talk.
Thank you. On the assumption that, that's where the comments stop for the moment. Just mentioned that the, the July 7th is the clock-in date at the legislature. We will vote on this budget today. It may be after some discussion, as Kate mentioned, of athletics and, and some broader discussion that where Penny will, will speak with us. But a couple other points. Thank you, Kate, for mentioning the tuition end of it. Of course, the elephant in the room is, you know, where do we achieve savings cuts of the magnitude that we need to, to make this balance, this budget balance, at least here on June 25th? I, you know, I, I am on other boards, and I've been on, in many budget processes. I can say that I've never felt less of a devotion to a particular budget at a particular time than I do today to this budget. I hate to be a trustee who undermines something that we are about to do. But I want the college community to understand how we think about this budget. And also to clearly understand that this, I would characterize as an opening salvo that is mandated by law that we must do. And we cannot advocate that duty, nor can we make up dollars out of thin air unless we have assurances that they are coming. Therefore, we are going to pass a budget, and it will look like this. But we also are firmly committed to the idea of monitoring this not only quarterly, but monthly and weekly and almost daily, to see exactly what is happening, to see exactly what facts are changing on the ground. And just as was the case with New York State, when they said, well, here's our budget, but we really don't know what it'll look like as the year goes on. I think I can frankly make that statement here as well. We have to produce a budget. We've done our best to do that in good faith, based on the facts that we have now. But I would hope and even expect that this will not be what happens on the ground as the year progresses. Of course, that depends on many outside people. We've talked about that. Certainly, the federal aid, what happens with enrollment is very much unknowable. But as Kate said, there's a lot of unknowable factors here. So we will look to monitor, amend, and manage this budget like a budget has never been managed before here at SUNY Erie. And we will do so with the idea of minimizing the impact on our students, our faculty, our administration, leadership, and our entire college community. But we have no choice at this point but to put forth something that is quite dismaying for us and for, for all of you. Because we're all devoted to the students and the college community. Obviously, I'm, I'm going to segue here to what Penny will talk about in terms of just a few mechanics and maybe more on the process of what, what we've done in the briefings and so forth. But we will be, with, with about, you know, 60%, two-thirds of our money tied up in personnel or more, there's no way to close a budget gap of this type without reductions in, in the personnel side. And that comes in really three forms. We have vacancies that we are not filling. That's obviously the quickest and best and least painful way to address savings and create savings. We have, as you all know, instituted the early retirement programs for both administrators and for faculty members. And we are seeing still how that will play out, but we appreciate our county's support for that program. That was very important. We did raise tuition, but we didn't feel it was prudent to do so beyond the 3% directive that had been put down by SUNY. And we do point out that we've been able to hold tuition flat for two years. That's quite an accomplishment, even as enrollment was going down. We are looking still at terms of refinancing the Workday program, and that's hit a bit of a legal snag, but we're, we're hoping to work that through one way or another to get that tool employed as well. That goes more to the fund balance, not so much the operating budget next year, but we are working on that. I think I will stop there with, I think, most of the key points having been covered either by me or by fellow trustees and ask Penny for her comments. What do you think we maybe didn't emphasize enough here? Or what would you like to underscore in some of the mechanics of how we go from here? Obviously, the third piece of the, beyond the vacancies and the retirement is, is layoffs of, of people who are employed at the college now. And that's the most painful topic for anyone on this call and every one of the trustees. And so, but we have to talk about it. So we, I'd like to call on Penny to, again, add, supplement, or correct anything I've said and talk a little bit more about where we go from here, assuming we have a, a vote on this budget resolution today. Positive vote.
Thank, thank you, Trustee Stone. First of all, just a quick thank you to all of you. You guys have worked incredibly closely with the team over the last, feels like an eternity, but maybe about, about eight weeks, helping us think about, walk through, talk through, and really create the most thoughtful budget we can put together, given that we had data changes fundamentally every day, as was evidenced yesterday when I got, we got off our last budget call and the state sent us an update. So that is something that I expect to continue through the summer, as you guys have already stated. This budget is one that we hope will be, you know, the worst that it will get and that from this point forward, with the federal aid and some of the other things, the push for enrollment that, that is really being driven right now through, through Paula and Enrollment Services, that, that the enrollment will be better than we're expecting. Again, those are big unknowns. We don't know how the pandemic will impact that. So we built what we felt like was a realistic budget, given everything that we know as of today. So with regards to that, as you know, we've been working on creating efficiencies in the operations side of the house and ensuring that every dollar that we spend is spent, spent well, spent efficiently. It's directed primarily at the, ensuring the students are succeeding and that we have academic programming that we need and the support that we need. So we really feel like we've gotten that as tight as we can get it, even though we did, again, for this year, set a little harder on some of the spending to try to help us close this gap. So that was step one. Step two was the vacancy controls, freezing all of the vacancies right now so that we can count those dollars towards closing the gap for the time being, retirement incentive. And then unfortunately, the last piece that we are having to consider, which are those personnel cuts. So we have talked through around one, this, this, these things will happen in phases because we don't spend all of our money right at the beginning of the year, and it's a process that goes over the year. So we're trying to do this in waves to try to manage what we have to do upfront to meet the budget needs. And as they're changing so frequently, our hope is, as we get into the fall, that, you know, we won't have to continue to do additional waves of, of considerations to close the gap, that the gap will start closing on the revenue side. So given that, that this is a next step, the proposed positions will now go, after this board meeting, will now go to the, the HR department, which will then begin to work with the unions to work through those processes that are legally binding in their contracts and ensure that we are doing everything appropriately and compassionately as we can manage in this process. So those are the next steps, and if there are any questions from that, then I will take them from the trustee.
Just a, Penny, just a kind of a technical question. If people who did not apply for the early retirement and who are going to be cut out of this budget, but don't, may not bump anywhere, is there still any time to reply? not bump anywhere, is there still any time to reply? Or we, we reached the max on early retirement? Or could people still apply?
I will say that the dollars that we had allocated have been used at this point, but it is entirely up to the Board of Trustees as to if that situation arises, whether you would want to extend that to, you know, to, to, as a, as a mitigation and a management factor. That's, that's up to you guys.
And obviously, we're not going to have enough to cover everybody, but there may be some people who thought about retiring and didn't, and they don't, are going to get caught. They don't have.
Correct. I, I have no, there is no reason why we should not be able to consider that, but that is something that the trustees would have to be accepting and, and be willing to do with, with the funding that we've got.
Okay. Thanks. Any other comments on Penny's comments? If not, we should initiate a conversation about the athletics that we, we brought up, you know, yesterday in our, you know, budget session, whatever we want to call it. But if we weren't clear on how we wanted to proceed, there seemed to be some agreement on the football and the football program and some of the others. But why don't we just, Penny, can you summarize where we are with the sport, with the.
Certainly, certainly. And I'll just give a very brief overview. We have the athletics director on the call with us to kind of give us a background. But what we have realized, and I'll let Doug speak as well, if, if he has anything to add. What we realized is that we were waiting until the N C J A came out with its guidance or instructions for fall sports, given the pandemic issue and all of the news that we've been seeing about practicing teams and the number of players that are starting to test positive for the, for the virus. And so we were kind of waiting for them to come. We were anticipating that they would, at a minimum, delay the fall season. That is not what they have said so far. And so we are in this, this place where, in order to comply with the requirements for having the athletics teams back on campus and practicing, we would incur a significant additional cost to, to keep them safe with P P E, to keep the cleaning done, to do the socially distancing pieces. And there are just some sports that, that, that social distancing would not work on, obviously, more higher contact sports. So we were considering and have been trying to figure out what our decision will be for our, our fall sports. And so that conversation started yesterday and there was not enough information at that point for us to kind of decide and, and what direction we were going to head. So we have requested that Director Mullin be on the phone call to give us some background on what he knows about what's been said so far, what the intents are, and then answer any questions that the trustees have so that we can make a decision at this point for our students. So Doug, do you have anything you want to add?
Well, just somewhere from my listening, most of the discussion of this consideration result, revolved around four main issues. First and foremost, of course, the health and safety of our students, faculty, and staff. Secondly, the logistical issues of what is expected and required to adapt to the safety with regard to COVID. And some of those logistics are challenging, not just in terms of are we able to have our orders fulfilled just to have the number of masks that we need. Orders that we make are often canceled and redirected to other, other purchasers. So even if we could, we made the order and can pay for it. And then, of course, there's the cost factor that runs from P P E and cleaning materials to increasing the number of vans or buses that we would need for folks to travel to competition because of social distancing and having fewer people in each vehicle. And the fourth one, there's a particular concern to me, is the risk that if we have a significant outbreak on our campus, the risk that those classes that need to meet face to face in order to complete and those learning objectives that are often applied and employment related, especially in our engineering and technologies and our health sciences, if a significant outbreak occurred and those face to face courses needed to be shut down before the semester completed, we would have many, many students who were unable to move forward in their degree program, which is our core mission. So those seem to be the four issues that a lot of our discussion has result, revolved around. And so I thought I'd just give that summary of the considerations against which we also need to consider the importance of athletics to our students, their college experience, to supporting their plans to enroll as, as well as attendance, and of course, the, the revenue against the costs that student athletes provide to our, to our enrollment. And I'll stop there.
Thanks. Penny, do you want to invite Mr. Mullin then?
Sure. Steve, you're on the phone call already, right?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead and, and, and give us your, your information. And then you can answer questions.
Sure. So this is where we currently stand. The NJCA a week ago provided us with, with guidelines of how sports will look this year. This is what we did not know and what we haven't known for a few months. And basically in those guidelines, for the most part, the sport procedures have not changed. They've given colleges the flexibility to start a little bit later, end earlier, lower schedules. But a lot of the guidelines were safety guidelines when it comes to participating in intercollegiate athletics. And they got those from a, from a number of different organizations. So regionally, in our region, we have 21 upstate New York community colleges in our region. So as directors, we have been having discussions on, on how things are going to look within the region. I can tell you right now, nationally, within the NJCA that I know of, and they put a, they've been putting a list online, right now, there are six colleges nationally that have, have canceled sports at least in the fall, some winters, ones actually throughout the year. Regionally, nobody has, has canceled anything yet. However, the NJCA gave us a deadline of July 27th to let them know if, if we're not going to be running sports, however, regionally. So everything we do isn't, isn't just about us. We have to take into consideration schedules and, and how everything's going to look regionally when we make these decisions. So regionally, we were looking to push that deadline up to just after the 4th of July, July 6th, July 7th, something like that. So we're meeting again tomorrow to vote on pushing that deadline up. So colleges can really figure out what, what each others are, are planning. I can say right now that what I know of, there are a few colleges that have said they are moving forward. There are a number of them that haven't received the word that they're not participating, but do not expect to have fall sports this year. So it's a mixed bag. However, nobody has, nobody has officially canceled yet at this point. We have talked about our different sports and how we can socially distance, playing a lesser schedule, maybe bringing in the student athletes a bit later. So say the third or fourth week of August versus the first week of August, playing a reduced, more regional schedule. When I say regional more, for us, it would be more central Western New York, trying to avoid any overnights that we can, where it would be just hopping on a bus or in a van, going straight to the facility, participating and coming back. And each sport has different, different guidelines. But ultimately, ultimately, sport, if you're going to run sport, there's an assumption of risk, right? Because there's contact. That's what sports are. So we know the benefits of sports. We know what sports, what athletics does for this college, not only financially, but, you know, higher graduation, higher persistence rates, especially among minorities. We have student athletes that want to play. I can tell you now, just within the community, there have been, I get at least three to four contacts per day, and this isn't counting my staff, of people that are ready to use our facilities. Kids are ready to play. And not only that, athletics is access to college for a lot of kids. So a lot of student athletes go to college. They get their degree, but the reason they went to college to begin with was to be able to play that sport. So any negative consequence as far as it's canceling, we'll have those negative consequences. Now I know we can execute the safety plan as, as, to the best of our ability. We can social distance to the best of our ability. But we will need P P E needs. We, we will have sanitary needs, and we certainly will need COVID support. I think you have to assume going into it that you may have an outbreak. So for a sport like football, if, if 25% of that sport comes down with it, or even, well, first off, we need the testing. So say we, we find out there's positive tests, we're going to have to test everyone. We're going to have to test everyone right away. They're short seasons. We can't shut everybody down for three weeks. We would have to test people right away. And then pull out those that are positive and provide support for those that are positive. In reading the higher guidelines the state has put out there, whether they're living on or off campus, we need to provide that support and put them in a safe environment. But that's something that we would need help as an athletic department from the college in order to, to run these sports. Now, when you're discussing fall sports, I just, I want to put that out there that, and maybe you guys know this, but athletics is not, you, you think of football just the fall or baseball just the spring. Athletics, you know, the student athletes are participating in one way or another for pretty much the entire time that they are here, whether it's a few hours training each week, weight rooms, or, or off-season training, to then the in-season training. But they, if, if we're going to make, if we're going to make cancellations, we have to keep that in mind that, that you're not just canceling a, if, if we want to go sport by sport, that's one thing, and we can discuss that. But if you're canceling fall, just understand that it's likely you're canceling spring and winter as well. If we're canceling the fall sema- semester, I don't want to say canceling, we could come back in November, relook at this and start winter sports and spring sports in the spring. But it will have an effect on enrollment for those spring sport and winter sport athletes if other colleges are opened up and if they have an opportunity to go elsewhere. But I do think it's smart to address this now because any, any, we certainly have been getting asked by our student athletes or coaches have every day, what's going on. And I think we owe it to them to, to make a decision whether we plan to move forward, if the state allows us to. Now, they haven't put out intercollegiate or interscholarship athletic guidelines yet, but if the state allows us to, if we plan to move forward, we need to let them know that. And if we're not, we need to let them know that too, so they can make their college decision.
And I just, I want to add just one last thing to that. Everything that Stephen said is true. These are the things that we need to consider. The college supporting this, the P P E and all of the other, the testing and things like that, our emergency operations group, which meets three times a week for the last three, four months, our biggest issue right now as a college, both to bring classes back on campus, and then in addition to that, to try to support the athletics program, as Doug said, is our ability to even get P P E, to even have access to the testing. And to date, we do not have the resources on hand now to run classes in the fall, all the classes we need to run in the fall, let alone the additional significant P P E and, and support that we would need to put on the athletics side of the house. So while we would, I, I agree. I mean, I, I agree with everything that Steve says. The fact of the matter is, we may get down to the day of opening classes and starting these programs and simply not have the ability to support it from a P P E perspective. And to date, the funding that we've gotten from the federal government and the state, we are not allowed to use it on P P E.
Stephen, this is Jeff Stone speaking. Could you talk a little bit about exactly what sports fall and what seasons here? Just, I think we all have some sense of that, but if you could just confirm and clarify, what sports exactly are we talking about if we are talking about quote unquote, fall sports, winter sports, spring sports, particularly the fall sports list? Obviously, that's the closest. And do you have, on the, on the relative risk of those sports vis a vis each other under COVID?
Yeah, sure. So fall sports, winter sports, spring sports. So there's different ways to look at it. So I can tell you what our fall sports are, categorized are, which are football, men's and women's soccer, cheerleading, cross-country volleyball. Those are our fall sports. With that said, winter sports are going to get started by October 1st. And traditionally, they're already doing workouts once school begins. So those would be basketball, hockey, bowling, swimming and diving. I hate if I missed something, but I think that's it for, for the, for the winter. And then the spring is baseball, softball, lacrosse. And understand that baseball and softball do run fall programs. In the past, it's, it's been, it's been scrimmages throughout the fall. Now, we've already had discussions on how we can lower, lower contact by eliminating those and, and just doing practice or even small sided practice if needed. But ultimately, I think we have to, for any of them that are participating, we have to have in place the ability to test and support for any of them that are participating at any time. That's what we're looking at.
Steve, can I ask you a question about, what are the parents of these athletes? What, what issues will they raise about, you know, the safety, the P P E, the testing and things like that? I mean, how do you, how do you deal with the parents?
Well, I haven't had any parents raise any, any questions to me at this point. And it's really interesting, folks, when you look at, at the youth sports and, and maybe some of you have kids at home that are playing and those groups and those teams are ready to go. And, and what I've hearing so far of teams already getting together and going to tournaments in Ohio and stuff like that, that's been going on. That's, that's, that's a real good question. I think from our standpoint, we have guidelines, health and safety guidelines that will, that are provided by our governing body, by our National Athletic Trainers Association, by the state of New York. And I'm, I don't want to assume, but there may be additional guidelines coming from the state of New York that we have to follow. The best we can do is, is follow those guidelines, which will include your P P Es and your social distancing as much as possible. And it may include limited travel, stuff like that, which we can do. For most parts, for most sports, we can create schedules that are day trips, not, not overnight trips. For the most part, we can do that. Yeah, I, I haven't heard anything from parents.
This is probably for Penny or Dan or whatever. What are the liability issues if an athlete comes down, not with an athletic injury, but the virus? What, where do we stand on that?
They, right now, it's covered under our normal, our normal liability insurances. We've not, we did ask that question at the beginning of this about, you know, if someone comes into our space and contracts the virus. And they don't seem concerned about it right now because it is, it's a global thing. If we make a decision to bring our teams back and we do this, it's not that I don't think that, you know, if someone wanted to come after us, they wouldn't come, they could come after us. But I think that, that, that there needs to be more of a conversation around that if we are going to, if we're going to do something like this and have these high contact sports, that that's probably a separate conversation we need to have with the insurance company.
Okay, okay.
I might provide some context. We had a Western New York consortium's meeting of presidents yesterday, and the majority of those institutions will be having athletics for the fall. Obviously, some of them are in different divisions. U B, so Tichus on the call, and, you know, we starting his football program next month. And their N C double A, which is a little different. But the other community colleges are, with the exception of, I think, only one, are also having athletics.
Okay. Stephen, thinking about, about the athletes that you're talking, dealing with every day, I'm trying to get a sense of how they would balance the need for certainty. One. I'm trying to get a sense of how they would balance the need for certainty, one way or the other, maybe thinking that they would like to know now and go to a different school, let's say, versus the desire to have us delay, further evaluate, wait to see what's happening with PPE, wait to see what other schools do. Which approach is more harmful to the students, in your view? And do you have a view on what we should do?
I'm not sure how much longer can delay. We have been delaying and delaying and delaying. To the point, we don't want to get into August and tell somebody. Well, I mean, there's a way to look at it. We can go in with every plan financially, we plan on getting all this stuff. I think if we do that, if we're able to get the PPEs, and we're able to get the testing, and we're able to provide support, and we plan going in, but then, you know what, we get shut down by the state, or it just, we have a major outbreak that we have to shut it down. I think that's one thing. But if we're, I don't know that we have a real long time, a couple of weeks, to make a decision with fall sports. So they do have time to, currently, to transfer if they chose to. And any recruits that are coming in would have a chance to look elsewhere. Some may just decide, the ones that may decide just not to go to college if they can't play, that certainly is something that could wait later. Or you'll still have some that will come here and finish their degree, even if they're not playing. So I think each individual is different. What would I do? I think, yeah, this is a real challenge, something I've thought about all along. I think if we have the proper support from the college, and that means the ability to have the PPEs, the sanitation, the ability to test when we need to test, which means if we have a positive test in soccer, I need to be able to test the rest of those kids and get results fairly quickly. Because shutting down for three weeks of a 10-week season, it's just, it's not feasible. So we need to be able to separate, and then once we separate them, we'll need to be able to support. So in the makeup of our rosters, it just, so football, we're very much a regional football program, for a two-year college football program, because we are, there's nothing west of Albany or east of Chicago other than us. So we are regionally Pittsburgh, Cleveland, Dunkstown, Erie, Rochester, Syracuse. This is where kids go to play. So we do have a much more regional roster, where our soccer programs and our volleyball programs are more local. A number of those kids would likely, if they come down with it, go home with, you know, be able to go home with mom and dad. Where if, where if we have 20 kids, if we have, like I said, 25% of a football roster, we might be dealing with 20 kids that we have to find support for, for two weeks. And that would include the housing and how we would figure that out. So if we could do all that, then I am, I am all for running sports because we can socially distance, we can play a reduced schedule. But I, I think you have to go into it financially ready to have an outbreak in order for it to run.
And just to add to Stephen's thing, my, our problem right now is we are not there. I cannot guarantee that we're gonna have PPE. I can't guarantee that we're gonna have the finances to support it. I can't guarantee that we're gonna have testing that can turn around in one to two days. I can't guarantee any of that as of right now. And we have been working on trying to get to that place for the last two months. And that's the part that makes this so difficult, is if we were there, I would feel better about having this move forward, because I think that we, but we aren't there. We don't have the money, we don't have extra money to put towards this. If our enrollment's gonna be down for the fall, the majority of the athletics budget comes from student fees, which is gonna be down. You know, we have got a budget gap right now. And I get everything Stephen's saying, because he's absolutely right. This is an issue, this is a place that we're at, this is really about this year. And, and there are, there's, all of us are fighting for the same PPE, the same testing requirements, waiting for the vaccine. And it's just too unknown for me to be able to say to athletics that, yes, this will be in place for you, and that's not a concern for us to consider, because it's a huge concern for us to consider.
Stephen, I thank you for your candor, appreciate, you know, your thinking on this. Obviously, you've living it for a couple of months. I don't know, to me, it feels, you know, I'm a multiple-sport athlete back, way back in the day. I feel a genuine sense of concern and care about how this affects students who, for whom athletics are a big, big part of their college experience, and really a driver. I'm not, I'm trying to set aside the financial concerns, because frankly, I don't know whether they're, to me, it might be a worry, you've got a lot of extra expenses with PPE and sanitizing and so forth. But then again, we're going to lose enrollment if we don't do the sports. The certainty as well, it is. So me, it feels like we're pushing a rock uphill on the fall sports. And when I say fall sports, I'm at least talking about the, what I would consider the more contact-oriented or close-quarter sports, such as football, soccer, and volleyball. I don't know how I feel about cross-country and whether there's an argument to be made that we keep that because it's inherently socially distant. But I just feel, you know, there were 35,000 new cases of COVID in the United States yesterday. And I just feel like we're going to have outbreak. And because a lot of people are asymptomatic with this disease, if we've got athletes engaging in close quarters and then going to labs, for example, or classrooms, it's not just a matter of assumption of risk by the athletes and their own calculus. We've got an entire campus to manage, and we've got some of those classes that really were impacted in the spring, such as the labs and the clinicals, depend on the ability of students to be physically in the classroom. And I am worried about our ability to deliver that function, that essential service, if we are thinking about asymptomatic athletes being in those same labs, for example. I'm worried about it. My needle would point to not doing sports in the fall, and I'm anxious to hear what other trustees say if we, I'm feeling like we should make the decision today from the certainty point based on Stephen's answer. I'll stop there.
I would just add on this, I appreciate your points, Jeff. And I appreciate how difficult the decision this is and all the, you know, sort of consequences on either side. But I, I think if you look at the, you know, the data on the recent increases in COVID cases, they fall within this demographic. And what I hear you saying, Steve, is that we need to plan for outbreaks, you know, among this population. And I, I think it would be not particularly responsible on our part to go forward, given all of the circumstances, what Penny's outlined, our concerns, what Jeff just said, and just for the safety and well-being of the student athletes themselves with fall sports. So I think we should err on the side of caution and safety here.
And I think in this case, clarity is kindness. And to be able to say for sure what we're going to do at this point is important. And I would also ask Steve to give us a sense of when we would have to make a decision for winter and spring sports. And would you recommend that that decision be made today or be postponed till further in the year?
So we have looked regionally of how it would look, because I think there will be a number of schools that look at not having sports in the fall. So in fact, we're looking at a regional schedule for our winter sports that would be obviously less, but within regional play, heavily weighted in the second semester, so that you could still run a season. Now, how that will look, will student athletes still come if we're only going to have half a season? It's hard to predict. If everybody's going to do what we are doing, then they will still come. But if, if other schools are going to run a fall season, with, meaning a fall semester and a spring, we will lose some of those kids. So if we're looking at canceling the fall semester of athletics, I would think by the November board meeting, we'd want to make a decision of whether we could start back up in January with our winter and spring. And keep in mind, because we, if we cancel the fall because we cancel the fall, or because we cancel the fall, I, this is unprecedented. I don't know what our spring will look like as far as who will still stay. We can still put a schedule together, the coaches will still work with the student athletes they have. Who stays or does not stay, I do not know. If you wanted to run a full winter schedule, it's tough, I mean, you're gonna, the kids are expected to start in October. And if we tell them in September, once they've already been here a month, I'm not sure that that's fair either. So I almost think you need to say, we're going to run fall, or we're not, and then come back in November or so, October, November, to decide whether we're gonna start back up in January with our winter and spring sports. If, you know, if you don't want to take it sport by sport, which that's, you know, that's also an opportunity as well. If you want to have more discussion on this and discuss sport by sport, we can do that as well.
So it sounds like we've got to November. So it sounds like we've got to November if we don't want to make a definitive decision today about the entire year.
Right.
Steve is saying November is a fair.
Yeah, I would say until November, because then, then students will have, once again, they'll have the opportunity and the time to transfer in January.
Okay. Okay, so we should probably sum this up and make a decision. And it seems like to me, it's gonna be very hard to proceed with the fall sports program. First, the budget is built, there's nothing built into the budget for the sports program, Penny, is that correct? For the fall?
Penny? I couldn't find my unmute button. No, actually, the budget does take into consideration what we thought was going to happen, which was that the fall schedule would either be pushed back into the spring or eliminated. So that concept is built into the budget already.
Okay. So do we, I guess, I guess the way I look at it is, I'm not sure it makes any sense to make an exception for cross-country. It seems to me if we're gonna eliminate the fall program, we should probably eliminate the entire, the entire program. Is, how do people feel about that? I know, Jeff, we talked about it a little bit. I don't know how we do one program and not the other, but.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. So Penny, to do it, do we need to make a motion on this? Do we need to, how do we officially make our decision on this?
Yes, I would, I would do it as an official record of the Board of Trustees. If Paula has a particular way that it needs to be done, I could let, I mean, she can speak up, or any of the, Kelly or any of the other people that do this on a regular basis, that this probably needs to be part of the official record for us.
Okay. So why don't we, why don't we entertain a motion to suspend, use the word suspend, the ECC fall sports program? And we'll take it up again in November to decide how to proceed in the, with the winter and spring sports?
Just on that, Lynn, we can take up the, the fall sports, but the winter sports. I think Steve said the practices start in October for basketball at another meeting, couldn't we?
Yes.
Right. So we don't have to wait till November to decide.
We've got to November to really call it off. But Todd, if you want to put together a motion, we can, we'll entertain that.
Well, I would, I would just, I mean, the motion would be that we would vote to suspend fall sports at the college and would consider sports in the winter at an appropriate board meeting.
Okay. Do I hear a second for that?
A second.
Trustee Hobler has made a motion, seconded by trustee Masello.
I'll take the role.
I'm sorry?
You can take the role on this vote?
Yes, to suspend the program. So if there's any further discussion, Kate will take the role on the motion.
Todd Hobler?
I approve.
Lynn Lenahan?
Approve.
I approve. Carrie Phillips?
Approve.
Jeff Stone?
Approve.
Susan Swartz?
Approve.
Denise Wilson?
Approve.
Albert Chu?
Approve.
That's unanimous, Mr. Chairman. So is it appropriate now to re-engage with the budget discussion?
Yes, I just, yes. We gotta pick up the motion, we gotta take up the resolutions.
Right.
Gotta grab this call real quick. Jeff, do you want to proceed with this?
Hey, Mark.
Okay. We had a broad discussion on the budget itself, as to which there's a lot of written material here available online and to the trustees. We've talked in athletics program, and I don't think that has changed sufficient magnitude, Penny, to make us have this budget be different at this point, because there's been some build-in, as you mentioned, with the expectation that fall sports would be affected by the pandemic.
Correct.
If that is the case, then I think the right thing to do is to have one last opportunity for any final comments from trustees or others about this budget. And if there are none, we should take up, I believe, three resolutions. The overall budget resolution on my page 120, with a variety of whereas clauses there. And then we.
Jeff?
Yes?
I believe the, I believe the resolutions in the book have a different budget number than the one that I sent you yesterday, so make sure that you correct that in your, whatever it is you guys approved.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily making the motion, I'm just kind of explaining where we are. We've got three motions, I think, the overall budget with a variety of whereas clauses that, like the budget message, begin telling the story of our thinking on this. And then we have the shorter actual resolutions, which adopt the college operating budget for the fiscal year, beginning September 1st, 2020. We approve, and then we have a motion on the tuition and fee schedule, which actually are a component of the budget. So there, as I see it, Penny, there are three different resolutions, roughly at my page 120.
Correct.
123, 124.
Yep.
Yes, there are three resolutions, and of them, the resolution that is called Draft Rezo Operating Budget, I think is at 78 at, in the document that you've got. And with the changes that we added yesterday is at 83924707, which is what you got sent this morning.
Okay, so as a group, we understand that what we're talking about here is the operating budget as circulated this morning, the very latest changes that are available online. And further discussion or comments from any trustees or other participants in the meeting?
I think we can proceed.
Okay. Then we should, I guess I'll make a motion as to the, in the form attached in our written materials as to our adoption of the operating budget in its up-to-the-minute form as circulated for the fiscal year of SUNY Erie Community College, beginning September 1st, 2020.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by trustee Stone, seconded by trustee Hobler. Any discussion of the motion? If not, we can proceed with the role.
Todd Hobler?
I approve.
Lynn Lenahan?
Approve.
I reluctantly approve as well. Carrie Phillips?
Approve.
Jeff Stone?
I approve.
Susan Swartz?
Approve.
Denise Wilson?
Approve.
Albert Chu? Albert Chu? Albert, are you muted?
Approve.
Great, thank you. That's unanimous.
Okay, and I think stepping forward from that, as I see it, the next resolution is for us to approve the proposed tuition and fee schedule for the fiscal year commencing September 1st, 2020, in the firm, in the form circulated and reviewed by the board. I'll make that motion.
Motion made. I'll second it.
I have a question about on the existing page 125, the student service fee. It looks like in 2019, 2020, it was $60, 2021, 2020, 2021, also $60. It says that the percent change is 100%. Percent change is really 0%, correct? Both student life fees under the mandatory fees.
Kate, I circled, circled that too. I think that should be 0.00.
I agree. I just wanted to, so we can correct these documents before they get sent to the county. I'd appreciate that.
Two places.
Right.
Under student service fees is that we're looking at?
Right, the mandatory fees. It says that there's a percent change of 100%. It should be 0% because we're holding it steady at 60 for the 12 hours and for the less.
I see.
We're holding it at 4.
Yeah, I'll see.
I'll rerun all the percentages to make sure they're right.
With that amendment, we have the tuition and fee scheduled before us.
Okay, so we actually had to amend that. We need to amend to make that 0.0.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to propose that we adopt the tuition and fee schedule as corrected in two places to indicate a 0% increase rather than a 100.0% increase, as discussed.
And I'll second it. So there's a motion before us to approve the operating budget, which is page 123 of the budget message. It's been, it's been moved, it's been seconded. Any other discussion? If not?
Oh, and this is actually on the tuition and fee schedule because we already voted on the operating budget. Right?
This is, but this is-
We voted on the resolution for the maintenance of effort, I believe, and then we, we need to vote on the operating budget and the tuition budget is what we're doing now. Tuition and fees.
Tuition and-
Doing the fees out of it. Okay, but we're still voting on one page 23.
Right now, it's page, yes, the, the actual fee schedule is on page 125.
Okay, so on the amendment, although it's a favor.
Todd Hobler?
I approve.
Lynn Lenahan?
I approve.
I approve. Carrie Phillips?
Approve.
Jeff Stone?
Approve.
Susan Swartz?
Approve.
Denise Wilson?
Approved.
And Albert Chu?
Approve.
So I believe we, we have done the maintenance of effort, and we need to do the operating budget as well. Is that correct?
Correct. So somebody want to move the budget, move the operating budget?
I'll move it.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion been made and seconded to move the 2021 operating budget on page 123 of the budget resolution.
With the amended version, the most up-to-date version, as submitted by Penny this morning, with the documents we received. That's the motion.
Okay, are we all technically correct now? Okay, so Clay, Kate, you can call the rock.
Todd Hobler?
I approve.
Lynn Lenahan?
Approve.
I approve. Carrie Phillips?
Approve.
Jeff Stone?
Approve.
Susan Swartz?
Approve.
Denise Wilson?
Approved.
Albert Chu?
Approve.
Thank you.
So the bottom line is we've just approved three resolutions, one for the maintenance of efforts, mission to the county, then the operating budget itself, and the tuition, and the fee schedule, and tuition schedule as well.
Okay, so we are, we are done with the adoption of the budget.
Without enthusiasm.
Indeed.
Right, no, there'll be no cheering section here. All right, let's move to, thank you, everybody, again, for getting through this process. Move the policy and governance. Kate, I don't think you have a report, do you?
No meeting, no report.
No meeting, no report. I believe the same strategic planning, Todd?
That's true. Yep, no meeting, no report.
And we'll move to curriculum, student success, and diversity. Susan and Denise, any, I don't think there's any report, is there?
Doug's, Doug's got a new addition.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Sorry, can you remind me what that is?
It's the OLV Human Services, SEAS Buffalo Scholarship Memory, Memorandum of Under, Understanding. You asked us to be able to include that for you now.
Right, the OLV is on, was on the consent agenda, I believe.
Oh, it's back on there, okay.
It was approved.
That was approved, consent agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're all set.
We're, we're good then, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to the report of the chair. Well, let's, you know, for most of us, we're gonna be, the year will continue, but we're gonna be losing two key people today at the last meeting, obviously President McCoy and our, our budget CFO, Penny Howard. This is your last board meeting, and just wanted to, to thank and commend both of you for your service to the school. Certainly, no one would have anticipated that your, your time here would involve a, you know, once-in-a-lifetime pandemic that would create havoc and upheaval throughout the school, but with your leadership, we're able to cope and function and then discharge our responsibilities. And that's a huge, that's a huge accomplishment. So Dan, we want to wish you the best in your new assignment in Kansas City. With the school close to Kansas City, it's a great, great place. And Penny as well, in Philadelphia, I know you're going to be very successful. And so in many respects, today is a, an end of an era. I mean, we're, we're saying goodbye to two, our two, our two key administrators, and you know, while we're dealing with a difficult situation, but because of your service, we're, we're going to get through this and succeed. You know, we will, you know, we'll be back in full force in the fall and being able to do that because of your service to the school. So I know we've had our ups and downs, but you know what? We, we've kept our eye on the ball, we've moved forward. And I think speaking for everyone, I'll certainly give everybody else an opportunity, but we want to wish both of you nothing but success, happiness, and achievement throughout the rest of your career. So anyone else like to speak to that?
Just quickly, congratulations to both of you on your new positions and best wishes to both of you. And I guess as budget and audit chair, I'd like to particularly thank Penny for what I know firsthand to be really, really hard, dedicated work on behalf of the college community, the students, to make the best of this situation, as you've heard us discuss all morning. So Penny, your, your, your work here is very much appreciated as you leave us.
And I'd like to echo that sentiment and wish both Dan and Penny all the best. And I too have had the opportunity to work with Penny on the policy committee. She has staffed it for her whole tenure here, has really helped move the college along so that we have policies in place that are clear and evergreen, and I can't thank you enough for all that you've done to help that committee and me personally.
Yes, just thank you and good luck to both of you. All the best.
Same here, both for both of you. You will be missed.
I want to thank the both. I'm sorry, Susan.
That's okay.
You know, your work with Middle States, that was very key in the early part of your tenure to, I guess, get our program in line with what was required, what was missing, and I think you just did some great work in getting us through those, through those challenges. So Dan, I know you've got a report, so you'll probably want to maybe, you know, speak then, but again, we, you know, we wish you all the best, both of you, and we'll be looking forward to hearing about, you know, how you're doing and hopefully we can call on you if we need your advice as we proceed.
Albert, did we hear you attempting to make a comment there?
You tried, you heard me attempt several times.
Poor Albert.
But I want to thank them both for their, for their time, and it has been a pleasure over a lot of my tenure to work with them both. They're both, they're dedicated to what's best for the student population of SUNY Erie. I know where, where they go next, they'll both be extremely successful, and I wish them all the best.
Albert, since we've got you on the line here, I know you're planning to move in your, to update your education as well. I know we talked to you last week about some of your plans. And we don't meet again until August, and I don't know if you'll be with us at that point. Can you bring us up to date on your plans?
Well, I, I intend to continue to serve through September until we have new elections.
Great, that's-
But I will be starting a master's program in the fall.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Great, well, I'm glad you're gonna still be with us throughout the summer, Albert. Because you've been a very valuable student trustee, and you, you've just brought a lot to the table, your maturity, your experience, and your forthrightness. You, you have fought for the students. So, but I'm glad you're, we're not saying goodbye today. So-
I, I, Lynn, if I can just-
Go ahead, sure.
Wish both Dan and Penny well. I know I had to jump in quick before you moved on, but I just wanted to say thank you both for everything you have done. Penny, I, I will definitely miss your, your glances across the boardroom to tell me to just breathe. I think you have even said that once or twice to me, just breathe. I'll take care of it, and you have always, so I just wanted to say personally, thank you for that.
Well, thank you all very much. I, I appreciate that, and, and I am going to miss working with this group. We've, we've really built something very solid here, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move along to the, although I don't think we have many, we did have a marketing committee meeting the other day. Paula, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that today, or if you want to say that, I know today's a busy day. But we are working hard on the, the 4,000 people in the Phase 4 of the funnel. And we're gonna very, we're gonna be meeting every two weeks over the summer with marketing committee, and there's a whole lot of innovation and new ideas coming forth. Paula, is that good enough?
Um, yeah, I'll just add, I did send, or I did have Kelly send the, the enroll, the expanded enrollment funnel, at least the breakdown of who's in what portion of the funnel, and what we normally do, as well as some extra tactics that we're adding. So that enrollment piece, where we talk about that, the tactics there, that is all new. That's in addition to the outreach that we normally do to push students to advisement. We're trying to cultivate that relationship with them where it's a little bit more of a personalized experience, and they're not just receiving the cookie-cutter messages to say, now it's time to advise, or you go, you go take your advisement test. So we are working on those pieces right now. I can give you a really brief update on the enrollment piece right now. So we, we are trending up right now on new students. Again, we're extremely early in the enrollment cycle, so I always caution on this. But we are seeing a trend of, a downward trend in continuing students, which is always alarming when you see something like that. And one of the deans did reach out to me already to ask if we can add that conversation to those Tuesday meetings as well, to talk about maybe some tactics we can take with the, with the continuing students of things that we're not already doing. So we'll be discussing that. We do have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, and then we go to an every-other-week cycle, unless we need to add those to a weekly schedule, so we'll be doing that as well. We are seeing right now a, a slightly upward trend in returning students, which is those stop-out students we've talked to before, talked about before. They've been gone for more than a semester or so. Transfers are down right now. That one, I may, we may actually see an uptick in. It really depends on what people are doing as far as whether they're staying home or going back to their four-year. The one thing that I did take a look at this morning on the report is, right now, interesting trend that we're seeing is that the 100% online students, so those programs, those eight programs that we have that are 100% online, we are seeing an upward trend in those students. And normally, we do not see an uptick in those at this point in the year, so I'm going to keep watching that trend to see if it's something we should be working on. But we do have currently about 4,400 students in that accepted pool, who are basically in the back half of the funnel. So we're working, that's what this group is going to be working on specifically, to try and work on some conversion efforts to move them to enrollment. And again, once we make some decisions about fall semester and are able to make some announcements about what we're doing as far as classes go, we'll see what that trend and what that impact is going to be and what we may have to do to, to work through that there. That's it for now. I can, you know, more than happy to give a regular update to the board, you know, even in our off-cycle, as we do these, these meetings on Tuesdays, where, you know, Lynn will be there with us, but we'll be doing a recap. So we're, I'm more than happy to share those recaps with, with the board, because we're re-reviewing that funnel every, every two weeks when we talk about who's in what pool of the funnel, and how many, how many people we've been able to move the needle on, and what we may have to add in tactics in those areas to keep moving that needle.
Let me just say, Paula has all hands on deck for this enrollment drive. She's leaving nothing to the imagination, and everybody's fully on board and cooperating with, throughout the entire marketing team. So Paula, thank you so much.
Sure.
Okay, technology. Carrie, do you want to bring everybody up to date on your, your plans with Amina? I don't know if Carrie's gone. We're developing a technology committee. We had a meeting yesterday with Amina. Carrie's going to chair that committee. Kelly was on as well, and they're going to be meeting again, I believe, next week. And we'll be soon having a technology report from the board. So Carrie is, is all in on that, and she may have stepped away, but I was at, I was at that meeting yesterday, and they're doing very, very well. Talent management, I think Susan, is there a report?
Uh, no report.
Thank you. Okay, Dan, the president's report is up next. This is Dan's last report. Dan, I'd like to turn the, the meeting over to you.
Great, thank you, Lynn. Thank you for your generous comments, everyone. It's been an eventful month since we last met. With the death of George Floyd, there's been a call to action among the community college presidents at SUNY. And we've been meeting several times a week, and we released a collective statement on Twitter, as well as have committed to, just yesterday, the following initiatives, creating term-halt sessions or educational series on social justice, anti-racism, and equity for all students, faculty, and staff at our college. Enhancing cultural competency training for all those who need our institutions and who deliver our courses, programs, and services. Evaluating data to address disproportionate outcomes and identify issues of inequity and disparate treatment. Meeting regularly with our Black and Brown faculty and staff to listen to their experiences and respond to their needs. Creating an advocacy agenda to promptly and actively work with our legislators to underscore the moral imperative to fund community colleges as a way to improve our ability to meet the equity agenda of SUNY. And lastly, developing equity-based measure scorecards that hold our colleges accountable as individual campuses, but also as a sector. And internally at the college, we've had discussions among the cabinet about how best for the college to respond. And I want to thank Chrissy Archie and Chrissy Cleveland in their strong leadership here. One, one initiative is to develop a video stating SUNY Erie's institutional values and our explicit support for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I know that our own diversity academy will have and will be an important resource for education and training in the near future. With regards to a SUNY and state-level update, I'd like to begin by saying that we are part of a greater system and a state dealing with a pandemic, and, and sometimes it's hard to accept that the need of the whole is greater than the sum of the parts. But I believe that we do, and we also benefit from being part of the whole. But I believe that we do and we also benefit from being part of the whole, being part of SUNY and having faith in the state of New York making it right for our students in time. So one new benefit of being part of SUNY is the halfway scholars program that was initiated by our chancellor. So our students will be eligible for up to $1,500 beginning in the fall. And this initiative is to improve enrollment on our campuses and also to encourage students to stay in the SUNY family if they transfer to a four-year institution. So on Tuesday, a couple of days ago, we submitted an executive summary of SUNY Aerie's plan to restart in the fall, which will be reviewed by SUNY and then the New York State Department of Health for final certification. So we are very confident that we will receive approval from both, certainly. Now, what I learned from our all-presidents' meeting with the chancellor yesterday is that there is a lot of variety with regard to what SUNY's 64 institutions are doing in the fall. Some are testing and having students recertified every seven days. Others, like UB, are not testing at all, but will engage in screening and employing a trend analysis program from Stanford in order to detect coronavirus in the student population. We also found out that SUNY will be pursuing system-wide contracts to provide PPE for all 64 of its campuses. Now, this is a new development as SUNY community colleges were told initially to work with their respective counties in acquiring PPE. So we're very happy to now be included in the bulk purchases by SUNY for PPE. So another benefit from being part of the system. Also, in the all-presidents' meeting yesterday, we discussed the thorny issue of free speech, academic freedom, and expressions of hate. Teresa Miller provided us with the legal background regarding First Amendment rights on campus. And she suggested three avenues for presidents to address undesirable speech on campus. One is to ask and choose to elevate the conversation when necessary. Secondly is to declare and assert the progressive values of the college. And thirdly, to take a resurgent justice approach in addressing any harm incurred by expressions of hate. So this conversation was precipitated by comments and posts that SUNY institutions have been seeing and was very helpful in providing presidents with options. We also had a presentation from Truth and Consequences, a marketing firm engaged by SUNY to improve enrollment at our campuses. So the company has been doing extensive quantitative and qualitative research, including interviewing half of the SUNY presidents. And they have established a new brand position for SUNY, which, from which there will be multiple sectors-specific campaigns. So the position statement is SUNY fuels New York. And there are several pillars, including SUNY being a beacon of hope for the state. So we're looking forward to the community college-specific campaign that derives from SUNY fuels New York. And you'll be seeing that shortly. Also, yesterday, the presidents of. The presidents of the Consortium of Western New York Community Colleges and Universities. So again, the 21 private and public, for-profit and nonprofit institutions in the region met again yesterday. And it's been really good connecting with the education sector regularly and seeing how each one is responding to this new normal with regards to enrollment and obviously coronavirus. And it's consoling to know that we're in the same boat and there are a variety of approaches and actually much greater complications for those with residency. So some are considering residential pods as families that could interact together at all times. Many were having to respond to Governor Cuomo's new requirement of yesterday that people coming into New York State from other states that are COVID hotspots need to quarantine for two weeks. So those residential colleges are allowing students to come a few weeks earlier to complete their quarantine before they're allowed to interact on campus. So as people have alluded to, here we are, my last board meeting and my final few days as president of SUNY Aerie. It's amazing how three years can pass in the blink of an eye. And first and foremost, I want to thank the board for their abiding support of our students and everything we've been able to accomplish together over these past three years. The college serves as a beacon for many students and their families. And I also believe an engine for progressive change in the region. And so I'm just incredibly proud of what we've been able to do together in terms of creating a better college and a better Western New York community. From rebranding to getting on with accreditation footing with mail states, developing critical partnerships with industry, as well as new streams of non-duition revenue. I think together we've created a college to be proud of. There is obviously plenty for the next president to work on, but I believe the work we've done together has started, of course, for a better SUNY Aerie. And I also want to acknowledge the incredible work of my cabinet over the past three years and especially the past three months. The unprecedented burden on them during this pandemic and their selfless response was the reason I decided to say to the end of my term, you know, given how hard they were working, I really couldn't abandon them in the middle of a pandemic. And I also want to recognize our faculty and staff, both through this crisis and the past three years. Their commitment to our students has been nothing less than inspiring. So despite the challenges that may be ahead for SUNY Aerie, I truly believe the college has a cabinet, faculty, and staff to handle anything that might arise. And I certainly look forward to watching SUNY Aerie continue to do great things in Kansas City. I can honestly say that SUNY Aerie will always hold a special place in my heart. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to have served as your president. It's truly been my greatest honor. Signing off as your president.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate that very much. Are you going to be here through 30th? Are you leaving this weekend or?
No, yeah, no, packing this weekend, working through the 30th.
Okay, thank you.
Feel free to call.
We'll be in touch with you before you leave. Okay, Dan, thanks for that report. Albert, we have a student trustee report.
Thank you. Good morning. First, I'd publicly acknowledge the efforts of my fellow board members and administrators in their decision-making processes in this time of pandemic and financial strain. I would like you to be sure the student body, they have put students first before making all decisions. I want to thank you all. However, speaking of financial hardship, the students are extremely dismayed, disappointed, and really frankly a bit angry about the lack of funding from Erie County and New York State over the last couple of decades, which, as we know, results in the students paying 50% of the operating budget for the school instead of the initial agreed-upon 1/3. I know we can't help but think about if the funding that was there over the last, you know, two decades from the state and Erie County, we may not be, we may have to take these draconian measures now in order to just remain in the black. You know, we believe that our elected officials have frankly failed us and it's been a systematic failure. There really isn't much more to say about that. That's all I have.
Hey, Albert, thank you. Okay, now College Senate report is Colleen Quinn with us.
Hi, Len, how are you? Hi, everybody.
I should have assumed you were with us. I should have.
I've been quiet. I've just been listening and, you know, I just, outside of the Senate, I know you guys had to make a lot of really difficult decisions today, especially with the budget. And, you know, we really appreciate your hard work looking into everything and we know how hard that decision was to come to that. So with the College Senate, we met on June 9th and we used the body as more of an information session, making sure that all faculty and staff were able to get any information that they needed from COVID response, enrollment, marketing, the budget, all the different things that people had questions on. We also focused on anti-racism and extension of our diversity committee. So since that meeting, there's been an extension of our diversity structure to focus on anti-racism and systemic racism. And we're working with that body that may eventually become a reporting body to the College Senate so that we can, again, keep getting that information out. That body is going to be working this summer, trying to come up with forums and ways that we can work with our students to give them safe places to express themselves, discuss concerns, and any of those things as well. We ended that meeting early because there was a rally for educators for Black Lives Matter in Niagara Square that day at 4:15. Usually our Senate meeting goes till four and we cut it loose around 3:40 so that anyone watching or attending would have an opportunity to go downtown. So with that said, we, since that happened, the Faculty Council of Community College has also developed three resolutions that, of course, came the day after our meeting, so we weren't able to address them, but we'll be addressing them in September. So they are resolutions involving participation in campus-based programs, presentations, and forums designed to increase awareness of and solutions to matters of anti-racism, social and racial justice, and inclusion. Another one will be work to support recruitment and retention of students, faculty, and staff from underrepresented segments of our society. And then the third resolution will be to create in our classrooms and campuses an intellectual space for all where through civil discourse, ideas are shared and voices can be heard. So that's what we'll be taking up in September and we'll be working with that group as well. Also going to be sending out information to our senators and as well as other faculty and staff. There is another rally for educators and higher education, educators, faculty, staff, administration, anyone in education, students included. But there will be another rally on Tuesday, June 30th, also at 4:15 at the Niagara Square. So it was, the one on the 9th was a really peaceful demonstration. It was great. And I had a lot of colleagues go with their kids. It was awesome. So I would encourage anybody in education, if you have the opportunity to attend. And I want to say bye to Penny and Dan and you guys have been great to work with. We've been able to, you know, move shared governance further than it has under previous administrations and just enjoyed working with you guys and wish you best of luck in your future endeavors. That's all I have. Thanks, Len.
Thanks, Colleen, for your great work this year.
Yeah, and thank you for your anti-racism work at the College Senate. That's great to hear.
Thank you. It's a great forum that we can get a lot of that information across and support all of our students and faculty and staff. So I'm very lucky and fortunate that we can use that avenue.
And again, particularly during the last three months, the College Senate has really hung in there and provided leadership and we very much appreciate it. Thanks, Colleen. Okay, we're going to move along to the advancement report. Is Mike on the call?
Yes, I'm here.
Mike?
Good morning, everybody. Just a couple of quick things. I talked to trustee Masia before the meeting. You have our budget documents that we submit for every board meeting and there's one cosmetic mistake on there that I want to point out because it makes the report look worse than it should. There's actually some good news in the midst of, you know, we do a lot of face-to-face fundraising. We've had the close one, our golf tournament. So you naturally would see a decline in revenues, but the one part that we can highlight is that we've seen a variance in our restricted contributions when it comes to mostly scholarship. We anticipated only raising 281,000 in scholarship this year and actual year-to-date is 402,000. So you'll see a variance there in red parentheses, 121,000. That actually was an increase. And I appreciate Kate pointing it out. We don't know how that happened, but it did. So there is some good news amidst other not-so-great news. Just a couple really quick, high-level things that I wanted to mention. You know, the foundation had been working with the Equity and Diversity Office, particularly Tracy Archie and Tracy Cleveland and the Equity and Diversity Council on the creation of a Equity and Diversity Scholarship. And that had been going on for several months and obviously with the events of the last several weeks to months have accelerated that. So we are getting close to announcing an Equity and Diversity Scholarship that will be supported and sponsored by the Equity and Diversity Office as well as the foundation. And so we want to have some positive impact for students of color and it's a way for people in the community and the college community to help others. We also, as I've discussed previously, have a Student Emergency Fund. The matching opportunity with SUNY exists until July 15th. We have collateral going out shortly, so look at your inboxes and your mailboxes. Thank you to those who've already contributed to the Student Emergency Fund. We appreciate that. We also would encourage those who can to help us, you know, build that up before July 15th and maybe even more importantly, share that with your friends and your family so that we can spread the word on that as much as possible. Anecdotally, we've had a couple of students that we could say would have been homeless this summer if we didn't figure out a way to cover their rental costs that they didn't incorporate into their budgets because they didn't anticipate having to stay in Buffalo over the summer. Maybe from New York City, one being a national student, being unable to go back to their place of origin. They needed to pay that extra rental cost and they would have been on the street if we didn't have the foresight to create the emergency fund and then capitalize. So there are some positive things that we're trying to do in light of all the summer stuff. For those of you who have been around for five years or more, you've been hearing talk about a Tesla solar donation for years now. And the good news is that the installation started in the last couple of weeks and it's going up on top of the stone building and should be completed shortly. So again, some, a little bit of a ray of light in some of the darkness that we've been experiencing. Last thing I'd like to say, just because we don't often have a chance to say these things publicly, I wanted to thank Penny and Dan for their leadership. It's been an absolute pleasure working with both of them over the last number of years through some difficult experiences. And I think Dan has helped set the foundation course, you know, in an appropriate way. We've got a new operating agreement and I think we're building strong relationships there. And I think Penny got our budget process situation, again, using extremely difficult times, in the right, on the right track and in the right direction. So on behalf of my fellow cabinet members, I just wanted to thank you both and it's been an absolute pleasure. I've learned a lot from both of you. We're going to miss you. I feel like you're betraying us now, obviously. But thank you. And that's it for my report, Mr. Chair.
Thanks so much, Mike. Appreciate it. Okay, so we'll move into old business.
Could I just ask that we have a report at the next meeting on those tactics that enrollment is using to convert those people in the funnel to enrolled students?
Sure.
Just, you know, what specific outreach is happening? I'd like to get a better handle on that.
Absolutely. And we'll also keep you informed during the course of the summer as well. We're meeting every two weeks and, but we will have a report at the next meeting.
Well, I think the marketing piece is great too, but there, you know, the one-on-one kind of outreach from alumni, faculty, counselors, you know, that's the kind of thing I'm looking at, the marketing aspect. But I think that's the next phase that I'm interested in.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Any new business? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Motion made. Here, second.
Sorry, who's seconded?
Seconded. Albert's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can we take a five-minute break?
Yes, we'll take a five-minute break and we will return. Yes, we'll take a five-minute break and we will return.
Oh. Okay.
So the trustees met an executive session to discuss compensation for a particular employee. And now we return to session and time to adjourn.
Okay. This, this is a motion.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Moves to adjourn second by Susan Swartz.
Okay, thank you everybody. Again, difficult day, tough stuff. But we will keep at it and we will, we will, we will get this together and we'll thrive.